Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present, approval of the agenda. We have one addition under reports and presentations. The Public Utilities Commission meeting report would be six G. Is there any other changes? Counsel? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Shallen, second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, we have the April 5th, 2023 regular meeting and the April 10th, 2023 special meeting. You all received them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, or clarification needed? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve those two sets of minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane.
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor.
I'll abstain on B. I wasn't here on the 10th.
So it'll be five in favor, none against on one, and then, or you want to abstain from both?
I'll just abstain on the second if that's all right.
Okay. That now brings us to our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings, we will go on to reports and presentations. Stork Award, Kathy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here this evening to present Stork Awards to EMTs and officers who delivered a baby in the line of duty in the field, a pre-hospital setting. So if I could have Officer Dean Gangel, EMT Paramedic Brian Zales, EMT Quinn Swedenberg, and EMT Richard White, please come up, and then we have Dr. Thomas present to hand out the pins. And we also have representation by Marion Larson of the Central Region EMS, Emergency Medical Services Board, who's here tonight to witness this great honor that we have going on. So as far as I know, this is the first in the history of the Sock Center, but I can't verify for sure before the city bought the ambulance, and I believe the city bought the ambulance in 1986 if I'm not wrong. But I know since the city bought the ambulance, this is the first time a baby has been born in the ambulance pre-hospital setting, so. So on February 25th, 2023, at 12:16 a.m., Sock Center Police and the Sock Center ambulance were dispatched to a residence in the city of Sock Center for a female who was in labor. Upon arrival, the patient was found inside of a residence experiencing contractions. EMT started timing the contractions, which were coming closer together and getting stronger, with the female indicating she felt the need to push. So over the next few minutes, the EMTs assisted in delivering the baby boy with no complications. The umbilical cord was cut and the placenta was delivered, and then the mother and baby were taken to the hospital to be checked. So because of you three and the officer here, a life was born. So that's pretty amazing to me. So Dr. Thomas will present pins. EMT Quinn Swedenberg. EMT Paramedic Brian Zales. EMT Richard White. Officer Dean Gangels. Awesome job, guys. I dispatched that storm, it's coming too long. That was a different Dean. So thank you, guys, for your expertise in the field. Sure if you want to walk along with the council, we'll share your names as well.
Good job.
The baby didn't get the invite?
Thank you, thank you, guys, great work, thank you so much.
Must be past the baby's bedtime.
Then we can move on to the lifesaver award.
Okay, lifesaving award, this one's a little delayed, but due to circumstances beyond my and Dr. Thomas's control, we weren't able to get the update, patient updates that we needed in a timely manner. But nonetheless, it's well deserved, lifesaving measures that were presented in the pre-hospital setting as well, so. Can I have EMT Tim Duchesne? EMT Richard White? EMT firefighter Jeff Bromchenco? Officer Dustin Van Woldy? And EMT Paramedic Nick Weisensel is working tonight, he's not naked, so. Jeff's not here. Okay, on October 16th, 2022, at 12:53 p.m., the Sock Center police were dispatched and the Sock Center ambulance was paged for a male that had collapsed and had an unknown life status. Ambulance personnel requested the fire department be paged for assistance. Upon arrival, the EMTs noted the patient had an agonal breathing pattern, which is not sustainable for life. Pulse checks found no pulse presence, so manual compressions were initiated. An airway device was inserted and breathing was assisted using a bag valve mask. The cardiac monitor slash AED was attached, which at that time showed a non-shockable rhythm. So with the assistance of the fire department, the Lucas was attached to provide mechanical compressions, and the patient was moved onto a backboard and taken to the ambulance for transport to the hospital. En route to the hospital, mechanical compressions and assistance and breathing were continued, an IV was established, they reanalyzed the patient, and it was found that there was a shockable rhythm, so he was given one shock with the AED, and then compressions and assistance and breathing continued. At the hospital, EMTs assisted with CPR until the patient regained consciousness with a pulse and was able to breathe on his own. He was then airlifted to St. Cloud for a higher level of care. So once again, we have a lifesaving crew to be proud of. Police, fire, and EMS worked together and provided the lifesaving measures to save a life. Because of you, another beat goes on. So Dr. Thomas is present, we have pin presentations for EMT Tim Duchesne? EMT Richard White? Officer Dusty Van Woldy? And EMT firefighter Jeff Bromchenco. So thank you for your service. We also have our patient here today, Robert Tyson, he's sitting right here, and he wants to just say a couple words. He doesn't want to stand up to the podium, but.
You can hand him the microphone, okay?
There we go, and you don't need to stand up at all.
Excuse me, I want to thank you for all that you did. Of course, I don't want to remember any of that, but. Only thing I remember afterwards is my chest hurt for the next two months. And I'm glad to be alive, because what it meant for you guys, whatever made it. Excuse me. Doc said I was very lucky.
Thank you very much.
I thought I have a good handshake.
Go warm up your hands up, that's for sure.
Okay, Brian, as long as you're standing up, you may as well come do your police department monthly report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Activity report for March 2023. Some of the numbers we had, we did 196 traffic stops. We had 46 patrols at the school. We did community policing events of 52. We had 42 winner ordinance citations given out. Wrote six accidents. We had 26 medicals, 13 personal assists, 11 alarms. We did 15 welfare checks. 18 patrols at Walmart area. We had 11 juvenile problems. We had nine motorist assists a month. We did 48 assists for other police agencies. We had 12 suspicious vehicle calls. 22 matter of information calls. We wrote 31 people for no driver's license. And we wrote 22 tickets for people with revolved or suspended license. For a total of 773 calls. And then for, by month, we were up 75 from February. And then from, we were up 85 from last year, calls in the same month. That's about all I have.
Chief, I totaled all these up, and driving after suspension, after revocation of license, after cancellation, and no driver's license, I got about 55 of these in one month. And if they have no driver's license, and thank you, good job, if they have no driver's license, they have no insurance.
Generally.
Yeah, so the question I have is, I know a lot of these people, you know they have no driver's license, and you're going to pull them over anyway and give them another ticket. How many times do they get pulled over after the third time? Is there any way we can just take the car away from them and auction it off?
Unfortunately, the legislature won't let us do that.
That's too bad, because I really think that should be done. Okay, thanks, Chief, I appreciate it, good job.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, the school patrol, when you talk about that, thank you for being up there, having kids who cross up there and seeing the presence every, every day after school and before school and stuff is really nice, so I appreciate it.
Try to get there on weekends.
Right, and also thank your group for seeing all the different groups that we have in town, the emergency groups that we have in town represented when these awards get passed out. It's really appreciated that we have such good agencies in town, so thank you.
They do a great job.
Thank you, Brian. Public Works Department, Ben?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Once again, snow was prevalent over the past month, requiring a lot of plowing and cleanup. We did do tar patching when allowed, we were doing the worst potholes since all we have is cold mix right now. So once we get hot mix available, we'll start doing the smaller stuff and getting those cleaned up. Storm sewers required quite a bit of thawing, several culvert ends had to be cleaned out, just normal stuff every year. Arena, we had three weekends of events that required cleanup and prep work up there. At the airport, we did do some repairs to the hose reel for fuel, and we also did get a delivery of fuel out there. And we're still waiting for the software upgrade to our Fuel Master system to wrap up that project, so. I don't have a timeline on that will happen, I'm just waiting to hear from the company. But it's not going to be anytime soon, but based off what I was told. Parks Department, with the high water level on the lake and the large ice sheets moving around, it did rip one of the cables that was holding the pier in place, so it is now strapped to the shoreline until we can get it picked up and moved back to where it belongs. I don't think it had a lot of damage, there's one spud pole that needs some fixing, and there's a few things, but it doesn't look too major anyways. And then we did a few things at the campground to prepare for the start of the season. With it being so cold yet, we did not turn the water on just because we didn't want to have any freezing issues there, but once it warms up next week, and we know it opens on May 1st, so we'll definitely have the water going next week. I just wanted to wait until we got through this next cold snap, and then we'll be over there. Any questions I can answer?
Questions, comments?
Good job, Ben, good job.
Thank you. City Engineer Report, Keith?
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Few updates on a number of projects that are on your list here. Start with South Industrial Park, we do have, the lift station is now up and running out there. There's been a few minor little erosion issues from the, from the winter and the snow melt that they're already working on, and fixing them up temporarily until we get some, hopefully some grass growing, and if it ever warms up for us, we have some growing going on, so we'll get some things going on out there. One settlement area that's on that Stub Street to the north, right at the very end of the road that they'll have to tear out and patch that back in in the, in the near term here. But the contractors already have been given all those things, so they'll be working on those. On the information or Aerosmith site, really the only update I have there is we are still dealing with a little dispute between our contractor and their subcontractor to try to get that finalized out. It's just, yeah, it's an issue that we need to deal with, and hopefully we can soon, so we can get that one closed out. 2022's project is, I don't have a timeframe when they're going to come in, but it should be reasonably soon when things warm up a bit, beginning, starting to do all those punchless items, and, you know, won't be doing paving until later on in May, or maybe the first part of May, or June, but it's got to warm up before they can do that last lift of paving. But you'll start seeing some of that happen, probably in the next few, couple weeks, we'll probably get started out there, start cleaning that one up. Authors addition, we do have a pre-construction meeting on Friday, and they intend to actually start on as early as next Monday with something like silk vents and those kinds of things. We are still working to secure a few last easements out there. Just met with one land order this evening, and have sort of, I think, a verbal agreement on that, so I believe that leaves us with just one beyond that that we need to secure yet. So things will move forward on that one, and we'll start seeing a lot of action starting next week on that, on that project. City Hall front steps, those are out for quotes right now, they'll be, we're receiving quotes next Thursday, and it'll come to the council, so your next council meeting for that. So we have, we sent out six quote packages from that, let's hope we get, you know, three, four, or five of them back, hopefully, we'll see, but they'll be at your next meeting. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Planning Commission Report, Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have a copy of the Planning Commission agenda. We did hold a public hearing for a variance, which will be an action item on your agenda just a little later. We have the monthly building report. The $420,000 total, that needs to be amended because one of those permits was, is on hold at the moment. And so we have some year-end permits, there's so far in 2023, zoning permits, we've only had two, which is pretty common for the first part of the year. And then the annual summaries. I have the number of building permits issued by year, and I think due to the storm for the past couple years, we've had some storms that went through town, so we have been doing a lot of reshingling and repair from those storm damages. And the next one down is the demographics and population housing. We don't get the population number until July. Last year, we did not issue one permit for a new house, which is unusual. This year, we've already got one in and a couple more pending, which is good. And then we have the land use request, which usually those are the public hearings. And we've had the zoning, rezonings, intramuse permits, kind of broke that down with the how many we do a year, and then the percentage of what we do in the pie chart. And the rest of them is the, the next one is the year-end for the quarterly building permit value. So last year, we did $18.9 million worth of new construction. And then the last part is the 2022 January through December zoning permits that were issued throughout the year. And that was just over $1,000 for those permits. And those are for the small items like fences, sheds, things that don't require rebuilding permits. Any questions for me?
Questions, concerns? Thank you, Sarah. Six G Utility Commission Meeting Report. We had the meeting last night at 4:30. We had four things that we talked about. We will be looking at hiring an office position. We're kind of putting in place a succession plan for some of the people that are working there and get them on board, because not everybody stays at their jobs forever, so we need someone that knows what's going on. Drinking water report came back really good standings, that's the yearly thing. The Depot Feeds Building, since the city owns that, the utilities will be looking to put that on min bid to remove the tanks and some of the stuff in the back half of that lot, just for liability reasons. So I think they'll be talking to you, Ben, about getting that on board. So, and then the other thing that the utility's looking into is doing a generator, basically that will cover most of the city in case we have any problems. Reason is because we've been forewarned that for all the changes and everything that's getting pushed forward, there's not enough solar or wind power to supply everything that they want changed, and they are having municipalities look at buying generators to be able to cover it. So we are in the process of looking at that and seeing what that's going to happen, so. Any questions?
Was there a portion of the Depot Feeds Building that included some historical artifacts from the original depot?
Well, that is the original building, the original depot.
There's some writing on a wooden wall or something, as I recall?
That's, that's in the part of the building that'll stay.
Okay.
So the front office area and the part where they kept the bag feed and stuff like that, we're going to leave that there, and then if somebody, you know, on a lease agreement wants to possibly use it as a business or something for, as a startup, and if it works, we'll look at that option. But otherwise, the rest of it, we want to remove because it's all the steel and there's holes in the building, those tanks and augers and stuff are eventually, they haven't been used for years, so we want to get rid of those. So we're going on min bid for that, so. Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to action items. Seven A, approved resolution 2023-29 granting a variance.
So the Planning Commission, acting as the Board of Adjustment, conducted a public hearing on Tuesday, April 11th, to consider a request for a variance on property located at 520 Eighth Street South, legally described as the part of Lot 18, Robbins and Mendenthal's, and is owned by A&amp;H Concrete. The request was for a variance from the road right-of-way setback requirement of 30 feet from Eighth Street South. The request is for a setback of 20 feet, would allow the construction of a 42 by 128 commercial building. The Board does recommend that the request be approved. They did adopt in the resolution before you, five findings and nine conditions, and I won't go through all of those individually because you've had the opportunity to review those. The conditions have mostly to do with screening and was the majority of the concerns that were brought out. And so you have that before you, if you don't have any questions, I'd ask to approve resolution 2023-29, granting the variance to A&amp;H Concrete.
Comments, concerns?
I'll make a motion, if you want.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Diane to approve resolution 2023-29. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Any other last minute discussion? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven B, approve amendment to 2023 Budget, Ambulance Department.
So Kathy Struford at the Ambulance Department is requesting an amendment to the Medical Director Pay for 2023. The request is to include the pay reimbursement for the annual license update, the DEA certificate, and the Academy of FP, along with an increase to include additional time for the ALS licensing process. And so she's requesting an increase of $3,000 to be paid to the medical director, that's an annual, an annually. So that'll be one time. And then, of course, in the following years, I would imagine those numbers, the new budget would include those amounts. She's currently, for this year, has $3,000, so this additional $3,000 is to cover all the fees. When she was working for CentraCare, those were things that were included in her CentraCare license, but because now she is retired, she has to pick up those costs. And so we, as the ambulance department, are requesting, or she's requesting, or the director's requesting that we pick them up in a form of reimbursement. So that's really what we're doing, is requesting a $3,000 increase to the Medical Director Pay.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to authorize the $3,000 increase?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Any other comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven C, approve advancement and appointment of EMTs.
Kathy Struford, Ambulance Director, has also requested, effective April 19th, which is today, that Alyssa Zeimer be promoted from probationary EMT to an EMTB Level 1 for the ambulance service, along with the pay increase according to the city's current policy. While on probation, Alyssa has had favorable reviews, she's well exceeded her patient contact requirements, and she takes her share of call, and she is available for backup. So she is turning into be a very good EMT, and we're requesting that she be removed from probation. And in addition, we're requesting the appointment of Jordan Hartman as a probationary EMR, and this would be the Emergency Medical Responder slash Driver position, effective with a positive background check. He has acquired his EMR license on his own outside of the city, and now he, so there's no cost to adding him to the roster. He does wish to work with our service. So she's, the action requested is to approve the promotion of Alyssa Zeimer to EMTB 1, and the appointment of Jordan Hartman as a probationary EMR, effective April 19th, 2023.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the promotion and appointment?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Shallen, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven D, approve resolution 2023-30 approving amendment to liquor license.
What this license is, is tonight, is for Babbitt's Wine Bar, and they are here this evening. They have a wine license, or a 3-2 on sale and wine license right now, and they are going to, are proposing to upgrade that to a regular on-sale intoxicating and off-sale liquor license, which allows them the ability to do some things they can't do with the wine and taking, and having the bottle there and being able to sell something that they may, you know, go in there and taste it and like it and want to take it home, so. And then without, it has to do with corking and re-corking and some real quirky little laws that the Department of Public Safety has in effect. And they're working on a potential amendment to that legislation, but it, I'm not certain that will happen now. So what she's looking to do is amend her license to, for the effect of July 1st, right? Yeah, so it'll be effective July 1st. The reason we're doing this now versus waiting until we do the renewals for everybody is because this is an amendment, it takes more time down at the state, and we want to make sure that it's in place. There's no public hearing required, it's just a. There's no public hearing required, it's just a simple motion of the city council and then that gets forwarded on down to the state. So, we're looking to approve Resolution 2023-30, approving the amendment to the liquor license for Babbitt's Wine Bar LLC for the on-sale intoxicating and off-sale license.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2023-30?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7E, Approve Contract for Sculpture, Fire Department.
The contract for the Fire Department Memorial Sculpture is in your packet for approval. The Fire Department is recommending that the city proceed by approving the contract. This is for the life-size, a single firefighter sculpture that they addressed the council with, I believe at budget time is when we talked about that. And so, this would be commissioned by the same person that did the Sinclair Lewis statue out in front of the library over by Kimball. And the total cost under this contract is $50,000, and that would be through the Fire Department. And so, this is not tax dollars that is going into this, it's from the department. So, what we're asking to do tonight is to authorize execution of the Fire Department sculpture contract.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to authorize the execution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Any other comments? Let's call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain.
Aye.
Or in favor, none against, one abstention.
When are they planning on getting, going and doing it? Do we know of that piece?
What do you mean?
So, once the contract is out, are they starting work on the statue right away? Or is it something that?
It's my understanding, but it takes a long time.
Right.
So, I'm not certain that we'll see it this year.
Okay, just curious.
Maybe Joe knows more.
I think it's going to be more of a next year thing between the time they get started on the project and site prep and everything.
And where is it going?
Sinclair Lewis Park.
Okay.
Kind of down in the corner, right where the other flag is, right?
It's, I don't know, they have it all designated, it's kind of in the middle there. I don't know, Ben, you got a better?
It's toward the lake more, it's toward the lake.
Yeah.
Oh, towards the lake, okay.
Okay. Kind of where the old electric type building was.
All right. Okay. 7F, Set Meeting Date for Public Meeting with Nature Energy.
So, we did conduct a Google poll to determine a date that would work for most of the parties and including Nature Energy and the city council. So, the date of May 1st, 2023 at 1:00 PM has been the date that is selected for that public information meeting. So, I'm requesting that you call a special meeting for May 1st, 2023 at 1:00 PM for the purpose of conducting an informational public meeting with Nature Energy.
Questions?
That's a Monday, correct?
It is a Monday.
Yes.
It's at 1:00 in the afternoon on a Monday.
And we did a survey, so we know everybody's going to be here because they require all five of us to be here for that, so. And this meeting mainly is put together just so we can, anyone that doesn't have full information isn't running around being a naysayer, running it in the ground before they don't have the facts. I'll lay that out there whether someone likes it or not, but that's.
Good for you.
So, do I have a motion to call the special meeting for May 1st, 2023 at 1:00 PM?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Shallen, second by Joel. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Unfinished Business, Funding Authors Edition Project.
On the Authors Edition Project, I think we talked about at the last meeting, the Finance Committee was going to meet. We did meet, I had our bond council run some figures of what it would look if we were to bond that. Of course, then we're committed to that longer term of payment and if we have a lot of sales, we wouldn't want it carried out that far. Plus, with the interest and the bond issuance costs and looking at other available funding that we have, they're asking that we pursue an inter-fund loan from the hospital fund that we have, similar to what we did with Elm Street. With the, well, we'll set it up the same, we have to have interest, but we will then be able to, as lots sell, we'll be able to pay that back. And that will be the interim that it will be in, we won't be locked into a specific schedule. So, I'm putting together some numbers for them, where the different available funding is, and that'll come back in the form of a resolution to the city council because they'll have to formally approve that inter-fund loan. So, at this point, they're not recommending to go out to, to the, out to, for a bond, for a special bond, sorry. So, we'll self-fund it, put it that way.
Questions, concerns? Okay, we have no new business, then brings us to our consent agenda. Schedule of Claims, unpaid claims of $67,225.40, paid claims of $160, for a total of $67,385.40. March Checks, Paid Claims/Payroll of $479,929.05. There's also the Arbor Day Proclamation Acknowledgement in your packet and gambling application for exempt permit requests from Sox Inter Alliance Club for pull tabs for July 26th through 29th, 2023, and a raffle for July 29th, 2023 at the Stearns County Fairgrounds. We also have a gambling application for exempt permit requests from the Knights of Columbus Council 4863 for bingo and a raffle for July 26th through 30th, 2023 at the Stearns County Fairgrounds. Is there any questions or concerns about the consent calendar as presented? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Informational Items.
Just a couple of informational items, the one from Charter Communications that we're required to present because of our franchise agreement regarding charges for equipment that people use, and you can read that. And the other thing is Saturday, the 22nd, from 8:00 AM to noon is the Scrap Metal Day at the Civic Arena. And this is not the e-waste, this is just the scrap metal one, like refrigerators and metal pots and pans. The e-waste and scrap metal will also be held in conjunction in August with the paint and antifreeze, that hazardous waste one. So, we'll have hazardous waste, e-waste, and scrap metal all in August as well. But this is a chance for people to get a start on cleanup, so.
Okay, any questions about those two items? If not, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Joel, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.